Three hundred and seventy-two Hispanic and Latino residents in Chatham County, out of seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-five people, or about thirteen point six percent of the Canadian population. In South City, nearly forty-seven percent of residents identify as Hispanic slash Latino, while about one-seventh percent of Pittsburgh residents are Hispanic, Latino, and. Whereas the Town of South City Board of Commissioners recognize the unique and vital role of Hispanic and Latino residents to play in the fabric of our economy and workforce, as well as our faithful communities and social passion. And whereas the immigrant community advisory committee to the Town of South City looks forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, thus highlighting the rich heritage, art, history, food, music, and tradition of all twenty-six plus Latin American names. Whereas the Hispanic Liaison will be acknowledging the contributions of the Hispanic type Latino community at its tenth annual Hispanic Heritage Festival on Saturday, September the sixteenth, in downtown South City. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Thomas K. Pride III, of the Town of South City, North Carolina, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, to hereby honor this proclamation, September the fifteenth through October the fifteenth, that Hispanic Heritage Month in South City and early residents participate in activities to learn more about our Hispanic and Latino community. Adopted this day, what is that? Fifth, yeah, and even fifth day of September twenty twenty-three. And by me and. What was in that year?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Town Commissioners. I appreciate once again your support of our Hispanic Heritage Fiesta and this proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, wanted to. So I want to do the personally invite you to our Hispanic Heritage Fiesta. Uh, okay, from Saturday, we have a fantastic event planned out with, um, over ninety vendors. Uh, so booths from agencies, arts and crafts, food, and businesses that have signed up to participate at Fiesta. Of course, we always have live music and popular dance groups and our famous parade of Latino outfits in the middle of the afternoon. Um, so this year, we are welcoming, uh, Latinx artist, a Mexican-American, uh, Miriam Shemil, who will be, uh, the artist on exhibit at Fiesta. And her work will be on display at the North Carolina Incubators Gallery from the day, from the day of Fiesta until mid-October. We are also planning a closing, uh, uh, celebration of her exhibit on October thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth. And so hope that if you were to miss Fiesta, you'll have a chance to see her work at the incubator gallery, who's one of our partners at this event. Um, so today I sent, uh, the chief, our map that just got finalized, so that you can see the event layout and, uh, all the parking areas that we have secured. Um, but, uh, other than that, uh, we also have a fantastic raffle in the back of your flyer. There's information about the raffle, you can buy it because it's online. Uh, we have eight prizes for several other surprise prizes at Fiesta. So, uh, I appreciate y'all, uh, making this proclamation today and for the Hispanic Heritage Month. Appreciate your support, and I hope that you all will join us on Saturday the sixteenth, from twelve to six in downtown South City. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, next on the presentation list is the Town of South City Board of Employees Ball.
So, thank you, Jennifer. I just want to take a couple minutes to just highlight for the Board of Commissioners what town employees did a few weeks ago. What we did is our first employee ball event. Essentially, what was that? We've had so many new employees during the Town of Silver City here in the last year. We, we realized that if employees are solid and often they know the ins and outs of what they do, but we wanted to make sure in coordination with our strategic plan and providing a positive organizational work culture, that we're providing an opportunity for employees to learn the ins and outs, not only what they do with their job, but what people do throughout the other departments throughout their organization in order to build up collaboration and teamwork around the organization, to be able to enhance productivity, retain quality employees, because you feel like you're part of the team. Uh, giving you a chance to learn about what different departments do, attach some duties, learning about your own coworkers, uh, being a team player, working outside of the solid of your own, uh, area, and also promoting internal communication. We often work with our small team, but we don't get a chance to collaborate across departments, especially in the lower level of the city. So what we did essentially was we had stations throughout the entire workday. We made six different stops throughout the town, giving employees voluntarily, and we had nearly fifty participants, uh, town employees in this event, going to each of the different departments to learn more about what they do and provide interactive activity. So our first stop, we brought them, had bug jangles, breakfast to kick the morning off, and had, uh, our employees over at Break Park learning about the process of running and operating the Break Park pool and giving our employees the Department of Rec Department a chance to showcase what they do, uh, talk about how the pool operates, learn about what Parks and Rec staff does and everything they contribute to make your organization what it is. Uh, after that, we made our, our second stop. We, we transitioned over to public works, and our employees really enjoyed having the chance to go to the public works garage, learn how some of the equipment operates. Uh, we gave individuals a chance to see how the process works with going through installation of pipe, uh, being able to run different equipment, giving Cal and his team a chance to demonstrate how the different processes in public works go. Uh, we had employees interested in learning the meter reading process, so that was explained as well, and how we go about reading meters to assess what our, our water and sewer bills are. And get a lot of feedback and questions. So we have some pictures kind of demonstrating, uh, what that process looked like. Next, we had employees give them a chance to go to the fire department, interact with our fire department team, learn about the station, the history of the Silver City Fire Department, a chance to see the different apparatus and showcase that to our employees, and get a chance to experience what it's like to be put on turnout gear uh, and also be in a ladder truck. So we gave people a chance to ride the ladder, see what the weight's like in that truck or in that turnout gear, and experience for a few moments what it's like to be a firefighter in Silver City. Um, for the fourth stop, and I thought this was one of the most successful ones and one of the most challenges, how do you make HR and planning and finance exciting and interactive like the other processes work? We made it interactive by having lunch here in the courtroom for employees and turned it into an interactive Jeopardy game through around all those departments, so employees had a chance to have an engaging experience and learn about how the different administrative departments of the town worked. And then our next to last stop is the, and the Police Department. We have a training simulator that our Police Department, uh, has and learning how to, uh, prepare for a live situation. Our employees are given the chance to see our, our upstairs and go through that simulation project to really get where interested and learn a little bit what it's like to be a police officer in the Town of Silver City. So you can see on the left, a few of our employees going through that simulation exercise. And then we had a chance to do a tour of our water and wastewater plants. They're cr- critical components of what we do in Silver City and our operation. They're half of our entire town budget, but they're somewhat out of sight, out of mind. It's not something that people see or think about every day. There's an expectation of free water and quality service there, but it takes a lot of hard work of dedicated employees to make that possible. And it was exciting to give our water treatment, uh, employees the chance to showcase the benefits of the plant, show how the different regulations of the plant exist, and also provide a tour of the site and, uh, of demonstration of our reservoir. And then finally, the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, Brittany, our superintendent, did an excellent job doing a tour on a hot afternoon, uh, the wastewater plant and showing what all it takes to make that operation go and talked a little bit about, um, how the plant works and the excitement around what we're gonna have going on out there that the plants upgraded that wastewater plant. Um, this overall was a really successful event. We, we did a survey of employees and feel like what they got out of it, and it's really engaging, people enjoyed the experience. I think employees got a chance to meet employees that they really don't know and build some teamwork and camaraderie. And I think this has really done a lot to boost and improve the, the morale of employees working for the organization. And so we're really proud of this. Uh, something we'll probably modify in the future when we have other opportunities to engage with employees, but, uh, I think we really want to take a chance to highlight a successful event that we had. Thank you.
And, uh, just from, uh, everybody know, for three minutes, you have three minutes to speak about if you want to speak. And, uh, if I call your name, if you will come up to the podiums, the name, address, uh, please say that before you start to speak. First up on the comment is Gilbert, uh, is that Hayden? Sorry, I got an action. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. All right.
That better? All right. Gilbert McGon, um, Wake County and Silver City, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'm Director of Hispano de Suro. We are here today to file a public statement charging Elvin Colos Espino with discrimination against Hispano de Suro for rejecting our application to participate in the Hispanic Fiesta to be held on September sixteen, twenty twenty-three. In September of twenty twenty-two, we participated in the Fiesta event, the booth sharing our services. A few of which are educational options for kids K to twelve, health and wellness, and civics and public policy. This year, our application was rejected by Elvin Colos Espino, and this is the reason, and I quote, "The committee that reviews Fiesta applications determined that the work mission of your organization is not a good fit for our events." Signed, Delana Duvester, Executive Director of Elvin Colos Espino. Elvin Colos Espino states on their website and final one C three chart that they support inclusivity, marginalized populations, and they support equity for all of those who have been a victim of discrimination, and that they fight for the rights of people to speak up and make their voices heard. But wait, only if this applies if you agree with everything they stand for and believe. Their rejection of our application to participate in the twenty twenty-three Fiesta is a blatant act of discrimination against nonpartisan Hispanic family value centric organization serving the Hispanic community here in Silver City. Our organization serves to educate, empower, and move our community to be active in local affairs. This mission is in line with the work and mission of Elvin Colos Espino. We were also told that we could not have our information on another vendor's booth. What, what, what's that? We were also told we could not walk around the event and hand out information to attendees. We have this in writing via email. This is a public and free event on public property. Newsflash, Elvin Colos Espino, freedom of speech, freedom of movement, freedom of assembly is legal in the United States of America. This is not Cuba, this is not China, this is not Russia, this is not socialist Venezuela. Our right to speak with anyone, anywhere is not dictated by your communist tendency to limit where we go, who can speak, and what events we can attend. You are in the wrong state and the wrong county. What are you afraid of? Are you afraid that the info we share with families will lift them up and prosper them and educate them, and they will realize that you are not the expert commonly with to services and education for their families? We actually need to do something about this and cite them for not allowing us to be part of this event. Thank you.
Addie White? Say your name and address, please.
Sure, I'm, sure, I'm Patty White. I live near Pittsburgh, here in North Carolina, also parts of Cleveland. All right, I'm also speaking in favor of what this man just said. This organization represents those outreach services to communities where Hispanics live and work. They execute surveys, share programs, information on public policy and programs that affect Hispanics. Their goals are to educate their community outreach, advocacy services focused on Hispanic community in the Southeastern United States. They offer state-owned resolutions and training, detailed policy strategies to the executive and legislative ranks of government with a focus on Hispanic community. This is from their website, okay? Also, they hold educational events, perform Jordanburg surveys, they educate Hispanic communities on current state and federal policies, give their involvement through both family value focused policies and connected programs that benefit their events. They support and advocate for the Hispanic community and connect with family values. Where have they been in the last year, advise all our students? In August of the last year, they were doing a voter registration in Raleigh. They did scholarships for Hispanic families in Greenville in September, scholarships for Hispanic families in Charlotte, North Carolina, October twenty-two, scholarships for Hispanic families in Greensboro, scholarships for Hispanic families in Fayetteville, scholarships for Hispanic families in Durham, in Clayton, in Raleigh, in Concord, Hispanic engagement outreach in Raleigh, Hispanic leaders meeting, developing leaders in Hispanic community in Smithfield, North Carolina, Hispanic professional influencers meeting in Charlotte, working together and helping each other. I think I want to know, I'm just such a neighbor. School choice for Hispanic families, Gilford County. What's wrong with that? You know what's on their website? Their scholarships? K through twelve for Christian and Catholic schools. Is that what's so offensive? Help me understand. How many of you go to church on Sunday morning? Please allow this organization to participate. There's nothing offensive on their website. There's nothing that shared values here that anybody can agree with. As Christians, diversity, inclusion, equity. Okay? Next time it's you, next time it's some family you don't agree with, and someone won't let you speak. They just want to have a booth. I'm angry. I'm doing Lord's work, and you can say what you want about that. But if you're in church on Sunday morning, and they aren't allowed to participate. Okay? This is on chat list. Only happy to call out that, I think that's the only reason why they're not being helped. I'm sincere about that. There's nothing in.
All right, next, Kim Mole. Say your name and address, please, sir.
Yeah, Tim Moore, I live off Air Force Road in Silver City. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I come again to also talk about supporting, uh, Gilbert McGon and Hispano de Suro. Uh, but first I'd like to point out that we recited something, right? You decided your vision, and number one in your vision is diversity. Diversity has a lot of, it being diversity of race, diversity of where you come from, and not diversity of thought. And we're not seeing that today. It also talks about, um, education, and, and Hispano de Suro, this was talked about, is big in education, getting scholarship for kids all over the state. Innovation, right? We should be innovating our community. We should be reaching out to new thoughts and new ideas. So, why, how are we gonna get this popular vote? I mean, the voice in the Hispanic community needs to come out, and we need people like Hispano de Suro that are gonna bring that up. Um, so, the question I have about it, why were they, uh, hooked out to not be able to be here during the Fiesta, right? They were here last year, there was no problem with that, and, uh, they should be allowed to come back again. So this has to be some sort of violation of a First Amendment. He has a right to speak. He can't even come and talk to the people. Um, and I'll point out, and this is pretty important, case of Snyder versus Phelps, that, um, this is not a private concern. This is a public concern. It's a Fiesta, the town Fiesta, and part of the, of the public concern means that there should be free speech, free speech for all to come. Uh, and by not allowing that free speech, now you've made it into a private concern, right? And it's not even really a public concern anymore. It's not a public event. Uh, we have, we supporting it, I assume. We have maintenance people that are coming in to help. We got electrical workers that are working in. Those are all supported by the city. That makes it a public event. So that, if you profess that diversity, then we should show that diversity in our community. I request that, that the board reconsider, may grant, uh, Hill a, uh, let's call it a, a one-stop type of permit to, to, uh, have his tent be there and represent his diverse ideas at the Fiesta.
I think that, yeah, this is, that's all, so it's kind of. So we'll move on to the. I think, uh, over here in, uh, R twenty-three, that's the way that we want.
Good afternoon. Um, first case is R twenty-three, that's zero eight zero one, West Thirteenth Street Businesses. The owner is Skins Farm and Forestry LLC. The applicant is Mark Agnes of CE Group. Their request is to rezone a portion of a parcel from agricultural residential to office and office institution. Um, the parcel is currently unaddressed but located on West Third Street and is approximately seven point five zero three acres. The planning board, current distance, last month, had their regular meeting and recommended approval of this proposal. The subject property is located north of West Third Street, uh, west of Frasier Storm Road, south and east of US Highway sixty-four. The zoning map shows that the area is currently zoned as agricultural residential to the, and parted out to the east and the west. Um, this map was not updated to show that, um, the rezoning for the, um, Otavian community, which is, was rezoned by the board to, um, residential reconditioning. The land use map shows that the area is better than rural residential. Rural residential is defined as areas of very low density that are environmentally sensitive. So if the board wishes to approve this map amendment, there would be a change needed to the land use development plan to make. As you can see from the site plan, um, this area is current is shown as to the north of West Third. This, um, this area is currently undeveloped and vacant. It is located to the north of the future Potavian subdivision and will have to meet the development standards of the U U O, meaning they will need to provide buffering access, lighting, and other, um, requirements once these permit site plans are the, um, for efficient development. The applicant is requesting a straight rezoning to office and institutional. So that means that they would be open to any uses that allow in the, that's by right in the office and institutional zone. As you can see from the, the adjacent properties picture, um, to the, um, north and, to the north, south, and east along US Highway sixty-four, our residential developments. So office and institutional would not be out of character with the area. Um, and it will provide, it will possibly provide uses that will support the, uh, residential community going. Your options go to deny those rezoning, um, either approve the map amendment to O N I as presented and find the rezoning as, um, consistent with, inconsistent with the filing city land development plan, but amend the land development plan to make use, deny the map amendment request as inconsistent with the surrounding area and the Silver City land development plan, or table the item, um, to, to date for more information. That's our presentation. Um, I believe we have some people, um, signed up to speak on this, on behalf of this. Are there any questions?
Um, so when we're talking, so I, I recall what we did, duty, it was an R three. Yes. Will be rezoned, so that is not, uh, rural residential. That is not low density, correct?
Correct.
I didn't think so. And so this would, this would be in, in harmony with that area.
Yes, sir. Due to the changes and dynamics of the area.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ed, in your time? Thank you.
All right, this time we'll go, uh, we have two people who've been signed up. Look again, uh, when you come, when you come over, please state your name and address. Uh, first, uh, Mark. Ash.
At home, okay.
Evening, Board members. Sad, Mark Ash is going to see her, office located downtown Raleigh and Chatham Park. It goes for three, six, seven, be great in part, but. And, uh, I'll be pretty, uh, basically this parcel is actually part of the Fox Haven parcel in terms of the, the tax end numbers. Uh, and so as you know, uh, Fox Haven was included this spring, and, uh, what we're looking to do is something that would be in concert with that particular project. Uh, and, and they have looked at some of the sketch lines that we've considered for the property and, uh, are not opposed to what we're doing. If anything, it's something that would be supported. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Next, uh, Stephen Ben.
Um, Cindy Dameron, five-one-zero-eight, US Highway sixty-four, website. Oh, the only reason I picked, picked this public hearing was one that's next is because anyone came up first. I really don't have dogs in this town, but, um, I am in the real estate business and I'll be, and am very enthused with what rezoning areas are and the process of doing them. And in my writing around, I noticed that with the planning, ever since, uh, the planning board has seen, been addressed with these rezonings of these two properties, I know the public hearing time is only on one of these two properties. And I really think it's important that, that the planning board and, uh, public hearings be notified, um, that there are still sides on Hine Road, Trans Road concerning a public hearing, but I have yet to see any, how it's been played. So, um, added to West Third Street. So that gives my concern, uh, you know, what you guys do with the zoning. I just think that everybody that comes and is presented to you um, has equal rights to a hearing and all notification.
I've read, uh, I've maybe seen you draw this up. So, maybe this is a question for we. So maybe this is a question for we under um. When we have a um, done request, we have an obligation as a town to, what, give two weeks' notice. You know, of an impending thing. Advertise something.
Well, yeah, that's the advertised. Mark property is uh reservation for us. It probably has to be marked, I mean, signed, yes, yes, okay.
Uh, so that that is part of the general statute, yes. Uh, I have gotten several phone calls about this particular piece of property and I want to give you uh information, which is, you know, sign out there with public hearing. And I did most, I personally went out there and booked myself, rode all the way around in circles. There aren't any signs out there. Um, or, uh, maybe I think that mine, I think the sign is all optional.
Signing to this place, that's how I got the pictures. Um, cause when I do the, when I go out and put those signs up, I also take pictures. So that's for, so all the pictures that were in the slides, that's when we're done. The problem is that we have signs that are on metal poles. Sometimes somebody passing fast, they can fall over very easily. They're not the sturdiest of signs. So the signs are out there. As a matter of fact, there were two signs placed out on this property. One at the intersection of Third and um George George Brooks Lane. And another one placed further down because the property is of the size. So two signs were actually placed at this location.
What? Oh, go ahead and try.
So, uh, how long were the signs placed? How how long were they at that point?
They were placed before the planning board meeting. Um, like the two weeks before the meeting, when the letters are mailed out.
Right. So how many weeks were they out there?
They should have been out there for at least four weeks.
Um, and what else was done to meet the requirements of public notice besides the signs?
The um applicants are, well, the applicants and the adjacent property owners, they received letters before the planning board meeting and again before town council meeting. Uh, added um add to our run in the local newspaper prior to the planning board meeting and prior to um the town council meeting.
So, um, William, does that mean all the statutory requirements that were required?
It sounds important.
Okay, so is there any notice impediment to us moving forward tonight?
I don't know anything.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Have you been able to check those signs? Yeah, and so, because it's unusual for those things to be. I mean, over the years, you know, yeah, they're not great at the time, but over the years, they've been a bunch of them. They're usually out there. And it was sort of, it it sort of shocked me that uh, if I went, I went down West Third Street, get six or take you back on to the Fred's Road, and I didn't see a sign anywhere. About way down, nothing.
You know, if you had got out, the terrain, and just the ashes would probably confirm what the night is. But the area right there near the road is very rocky. It's very hard to get us, it was very hard to get the sign in the ground. And then there's kind of like a drop off, a little drop off or gully right there next to the road. So if the sign had fell over in that area, does that mean, you gotta think about it, we had a little wind event on that hurricane that might have pushed them over a little bit into that little area.
Was there, you sent letters directly to all of the affected property owners?
Did you see those notifications twice?
Did you? So how many property owners, fourteen, so thirty letters? There's sponsored thirty, did you have any response to the thirty letters?
Did any come back? Um, I believe two came back um from the planning board, um, and they came back just recently, so we might have a couple more to come back from. And it's usually a bad afterthought, you know? Cause we use the town and county bill and.
William, based on the new testimony, do you see an issue with the notice requirements?
I'm reading the section now, but I I I think the uh if if a person comes and finds they didn't have those, but yet they obviously got noticed somehow, if they're here. And, uh, so in that situation, it's, I hope the court, the court will uphold the the notice sufficient.
Ms. Batista, how many weeks in the paper did the notice from?
It ran twice, um, the board, planning board meeting, and then again twice before town council.
So four weeks?
Yes, sir.
William, that should cover it, shouldn't it?
What?
Four weeks in the paper should cover us in the notice statute?
Yes.
So, I guess my question would be, if the signs, even though they may have fallen over, if the signs were not seen, can a person come back and say? Um, I didn't know anything about it because I didn't see a sign. It could have been that particular person was advertising that and they didn't know anything about it. Uh, they may not have purchased the newspaper to see that it was in there. So, you know, just thinking about different scenarios of what what could possibly.
I think once you run the public notice, there, that puts everybody on notice. You can't use as a defense, you didn't buy a paper that that puts the entire, well, entire communal notice. So usually the notice in the paper, if done properly, you know, hearing the other defect with a sign inadvertently falling down. Couple of written direct letters.
Can you say you got a picture of that sign?
Well, doesn't that take the pictures? But sometime I was looking to see if I caught the the actual sign in this. Kind of took it from too far away.
William, still, William, are you still with the statute?
Yes. I think it's been there, but we can always, yeah, uh, concerns, uh. I want to put them in different places for for more of them or something, but anyway, uh, people, but uh, if you continue to work that down, so it's maybe.
I mean, if you feel we've, we've met our statutory obligation, based on researching the statute, I'll come forward.
My only concern was since it wasn't, and this is to Ms. Boone saying that usually they assign all of the problems. They weren't on there with any legal brief person that would come back on the day if we approved it and flying, blah, blah, blah. If a person with as we sit here tonight has no idea about it, and that, uh, about this hearing and is uh, it has standing to to challenge it, I mean, they can always challenge it based on, and challenge the notice, you know, uh, the actions that they did to get notice on the statute. Um, in such cases, you know, it would just be done again, just before found something wrong with it. That's what we're going to do.
There was also an option that we could come back on certain, uh, legislative.
You can continue this hearing. Um, try to get the word out better, you know, or do better than whatever these notes, but um, but uh, since it would be a continuance of the already noticed hearing, I don't know if it's putting it all will necessarily cure any defects that of what pipeline exists.
I mean, if you're, if you're saying that you need our obligation, then we need our obligation.
No. I'm satisfied with the quality. That's okay. Did you show pictures of the signs?
They were, it's, I would like to, you know, I would have that.
Well, based on the testimony of the, of the general, I think it's been there. Ourself, place the sign.
Is anybody else willing to speak?
No, nobody else signed up to speak.
Who's in the public hearing?
Well, wait, don't, don't posit if you're entertaining possibility of continuing, but if not, it's fine.
You know, that's, that's entirely left to bold. I mean, if there's any question that, like, you're saying, like, continuing, put the sign beginning, maybe just recombate, you could do that.
But would it change any alleged defect in notice? Or would we have to renotice the whole hearing, run it again, resend out the letters, and repost the signs?
You could also handle it in that fashion.
Or you could just continue, you can just decide to continue this.
But if, if we're continuing or renoticing it, that, that would just continue?
Things, I mean.
No further notice required to continue.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of getting at. There's a difference.
Still get those.
I'm sorry?
You can still buy those again, not required.
Not with any requirement, you just. Basically, it's, it's, it's either, I mean.
Do we hear from the applicant again on this? What's your, um, what you're feeling on this?
My sense is that uh, that uh, if someone were to contest, if you had elected to approve this, we're going to I've been involved in some of those before. Uh, there's a thirty-day period uh for someone to contest that. And if someone did contest it, then you have to, you would do exactly what you just mentioned, have to have another public hearing uh and and do that. If nobody contests it, then um, there's an invasion.
I mean, ultimately, the risk is on the applicant, so do you want us to uh shore that up a little bit, or are you comfortable with us moving forward based on the testimony of notice?
Yeah, we missed that, these, the place and sign yourself on on the site. At the planning board meeting, we had a neighbor come and spoke in favor of the project, it was adjacent to the project.
Has anybody reached out to you with any negative comments?
We have not had any negative comments from the parcel across the three, the Fox Haven pro- uh project has looked at what we're proposing to do and support of it.
Yeah, so how long have, how long have you had a hold on it for? Somebody, anything else?
Yes, I did have that. So I had a question with regard to, you mentioned that, um, and that's for William. You mentioned that, um, if somebody had standing, can you explain who in this case, in this kind of an instance, who would have standing and who would not? They can order to contest something like this if they chose to use it.
Basically, I'm kind of scattered on that, but it's certainly a neighboring, like, adjacent property owner. It's a case-by-case basis. But or a town always has standing and, uh, so the next one they will probably have standing, this is about, you know, this is the case-by-case determination about four years of standing.
Well, I thought on the news, you know, probably, probably one of these examples will have that you get all of them, which is for Jason probably. Well, there is, there's some question, uh, someone brought it up. I got a phone call. And, you know, it's, it's deep gray here, it may be, may not. What would, what would be wrong with, um, Reese's, or wherever you call it, Reese's, put the sign back out there. You can just bring it back up and not eliminate all of the folks who did, wouldn't it?
I think, well, if they can destroy, it'd be harder to argue if someone had, yeah, that and that occurred. I don't know that it necessarily cured whether or not we had, uh, with whether or not we properly noticed it for tonight. But the next one is just the continuation of this one. So there's a problem. I don't know if it continues, uh, continuing to the day and time, so in the future, the next, you know, it's all. But I don't think there's a problem.
You don't think there's a problem with that?
In terms of the letters coming back, the, the uh, the statute provides that you have to send it to, you know, that's something.
And you're just required to send it by first, you know, send it by certified. No, we're not required to get signatures, I would think, oh, and, you know, just required a valid, right?
That's correct.
It's presumed received.
Correct.
Um, any harm to the applicant, what is, what's applicant's position on it?
We're certainly going to work with the will of the board here. Again, I still think if you, if you act on it tonight, there's a period where someone could contest this. That no one has spoken against the project, my knowledge at this time. Had anyone talked about it, so that 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 resolves itself in the thirty-day period.
And that thirty-day period is gonna exist whether we do it tonight or another night or another Sunday?
That's correct. Yeah, if someone, if there were people speaking against it, um, I might put it.
Right, and if and my whole issue is if we're not, if it's not curative, if we're not retroactive back to the date of original publication, then I'm not sure what we gain by continuing. I think we gain more by letting the thirty-day clock start to tick. That'd be my analysis, but I'll probably should leave that for William.
I agree with what you're saying. We're getting, we're getting legal advice. I think we, you know, my mind would, you know, trust the department.
Any more comment to face involved? That will close the vote.
Take action, yes.
Yeah.
We'll make a margin to approve the proposed zoning map amendment from AR to OI. Now further find that the amendment be inconsistent with Town Salar City's land development plan based on staff report supporting exhibits, consistency statement, and testimony and witnesses provided this evening. Uh, and further motion to amend the land development plan from rural residential to mixed use.
Second. All right, we have a motion, we have a second to continue further comment, but move. And we'll move to the vote, dollars and fair receipt by the same eye, all of them like signs, and move to the period. Next, public hearing, R seventy-three dash zero eight zero two. We'll open that public hearing.
This is case R seven three dash zero eight, zero two, Pine Grove Church Road. The owner is Dennis and Susan Hearn. The applicant is A D Hearn. Your request is to rezone for a rezoning property from agricultural residential to highway commercial conditional. These two parcels are currently undressed and lower, unaddressed and located on Pine Grove Church Road in our possibly nine point seven, seven, nine, eighteen. The tenant board would recommend, um, denial of this project. Where is that going?
Oh, was that a follow?
Yes, it was a follow, follow vote.
How many, uh, folks showed up?
See it on the first hearing on, uh, the scheduled page thirty-two.
Um, actually, you should have got it.
Oh, yeah, we got one. And then. Oh, just the, does the. Is that the end of the talk about?
No.
I don't recall.
No, it ended.
Um, actually thirteen people signed up to speak in our position on this case. One applicant, one person, the applicant showed up to speak in favor. The subject property is located in the Pine Grove Church Road and to the south of Route four twenty-one, exit. The zoning map shows that this area is currently zoned as agricultural residential to the north, south and east, and R twenty across, across Pine Grove Road, um, to the west. The land use match, um, recommends that this area be developed as low density residential. Low density residential is defined of area, the area, the residential development, typically single founding, uh, with minimum lot size of approximately half a acre. The applicant supplied a site, proposed site plan. The supply, the supply plan shows that the applicant is proposing to do, um, storage, uh, storage sharing to the south. Um, in the southern portion of the property, the commercial development to the north. An applicant did supply a, um, a manual to show the various uses that he's proposing or he would like to have open, um, to the north that will reside in the northern portion of the commercial district. The site is currently undeveloped with a utility line easement that runs, um, through the center of the site. The adjacent properties to the east and south are residential and to the north is Route four twenty-one, exit. Your options tonight are to approve the map amendment to highway commercial conditional as presented and find the rezoning as inconsistent with the silent city land development plan and amend the land development plan to make shoes. If the not approved amendment request is inconsistent with the surrounding area and the silent city land development plan, or take one of that amendment to a date certain. That's, that's presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, I would like to say it's no doubt because we, we need to get one as soon as we're all there. Ready for something developed. And we can pay the, the paper and trade or do. That will be down there.
You, you mean a slowdown in the development slowdown?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were talking about the power. Um, unfortunately, under, under state law, I cannot not accept an application for applicants, missing application. They have the right to do process and I have to take it through the, through the process.
Well, on this, for this particular application, I think I heard you say there's no, uh, water sewer lines.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, and what did you say about the driveway access?
Um, they will have to get a driveway permit, um, from N C D O T. Um, they may be, based on the information provided by D O T during the pre-development meeting, um, they will be limited to just the one access point. Um, and we'll have to work, they'll have to work that out with D O T. Um, it will be subject to any other, um, restrictions or development standards associated with the United Development or when they submit a site plan.
What about, I mean, how second you vet the neighbors?
Um, I, that is a good question and.
Because they put certain things there. You're going to have things coming in and out of.
Yeah.
And you've got someone that's in here.
Here. You get something said for a book. And I guess my thing is how close it is to the residential area. Because now five houses that are technically wired about it. Yes, and then you have some of the right, um, and then you have, um, the traffic coming in and out. Probably all times at night depending on it, but I just have a concern about how, how close it is to the residential area.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that may be a question for the applicant to address ours. This is a conditional rezoning and, um, William can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the board does have the liberty to add conditions as long as the applicant agrees to.
What is your reaction?
Um, I've had a lot of, there were thirteen people that showed up to see during the planning board. Um, and there have been multiple calls and concerns and dangers thrown, um, around adjacent property.
So the majority are afraid it's going to happen negatively.
Yes, mature enough. Yes.
You can't really consider property values, uh, testimony from.
Well, I'm just going to say to you.
I mean, you, I mean, you can, instead of that's being promoted. Qualifies or places.
But we can consider testimony of citizens who are opposed to it, correct?
Sure, yes.
And then.
They can give their opinion.
And we can also consider testimony of citizens who are for it.
Correct.
Um, was there anything else that came out of your, Ms. Baptiste, that came out of your sit downs on this? We need to be aware of any other issues?
Um, none of this time, the, the applicant is here. I know that he had stated that, um, he wanted to address the board and possibly present some, um, alternative scenarios.
But we do have a i- issue with the access point issue. Or is there an issue with the neighbors?
Yeah.
Um, any issues with the, either the easement, uh, I'm, I'm referring to the Duke Power easement and/or the easement for both water hazards and that.
Um, the site plan that was originally approved that it was, um, displayed, um, does show one, um, building in the, um, in the water and easement that may have, that will have to be removed. And I think that's an additional display, um, to show that. Um, the board is seeing exactly what the plan. Um, so he may have, um, another exhibit. There is a power easement that runs, um, through the property just south of those orange looking buildings. Um, and that will have to be, he'll have to get some kind of information or some kind of agreement with Duke Power in order to be able to provide, yes, access to those buildings.
And with D T, that low screening, one entrance.
Yes, sir.
You're not going to be able to avoid traversing it.
Correct. Because another entrance, um, the way that is laid out, another entrance would be too close to the access point for four twenty-one.
And then you have to have water and sewage to this particular site because the retails.
Yeah, according to building, they may have to, so depending on the operations. He, he has not nearly identified what the operations will be to the north. Um, so depending on the amount of capacity for outside traffic, um, and workers or employees, he may have to provide waters. But he will have to provide some kind of, um, facilities for, um, employees. Restaurant facilities, but probably employees.
But I, I have a question as well. Um, so when, so you said thirteen, thirteen of you spoke against it. You know, aside from the other thing, did anybody speak for it?
Um, no.
No, okay. Um, and can you give us a summary of what the concern, the, the thirteen, um, uh, folks that spoke against it? Can you give us a summary of what the concerns were?
Um, the main concerns for many of the residents were, um, the access increase in traffic. Um, increase in outside or relatively, um, people coming into their area because it's, it is an established area, established neighborhood. And they felt that with the, with their homes being right there close to the road, it was going to be a lot of, um, outside or transient people who don't live in the area, coming into the area and maybe presenting traffic issues and other issues for the neighborhood.
Was a follow voted in high management?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions right now? I mean, we've got two people signed up to speak for the public hearing. And if you would like to put a name and address, come up and first speaker is Mr. Davis.
Well, I can, you want to go? Well, I prefer, uh, if I'm the applicant. Um, but I was told through that, it's the same as the first go around and we weren't asked by the applicant to speak. And so.
Yes, the applicant may, he was supposed to go directly after Jim or back to. I'm sorry.
But, yeah, and again, uh, apologize for any misunderstanding there. So first go around for us on this sort of thing, but who wants to thank you personally, the town of Silent City, uh, mayor, uh, head of the commission, planning board, and all the other departments are coming out tonight. It's another one related to you, uh, the proposed plan for, again, your bag is a bad move, please, sir. Oh, I apologize. Casey Hearn, that's C A S E Y, H E A R N. And I am the applicant. And I am one zero four, Kalen Lane, K A Y L A N, Lane in Thomasville, North Carolina, two seven three six zero. Uh, in nineteen eighty-eight, a family purchased this one hundred and four acres on Pine Grove Church Road from the elder folks. And over time, that piece of property, and we surveyed, we surveyed it over time. And, uh, over time, lots of homes have been built in that area. And due to that large, uh, Duke Energy Transmission Line, I think, so one point four acres, that falls at that property that was named earlier and, um, the property record department actually said that building site is keeping secondary for location of that outline. Uh, so we retained that parcel that is contiguous with another parcel on the south side over the years. And, um, several people have contacted us by purchasing this, not for residential use, but for other uses that they were interested in. Uh, but we've kept those over time. Uh, so, uh, we know that there has been a lot of, a lot of development coming, um, very quickly, and we will see in the mega site, uh, box saving, real estate developments, and we've got a planning board site. Um, and there's a growing need for more, uh, storage facilities. Uh, we hired a storage industry consultant that spent over forty years, uh, in this industry. He's consulted on projects in fifty states and recording companies. When I showed him this location, he said, this is the spot. He said, this is the spot that you need to be. Uh, we had our pre-development meeting in February. We talked through a number of actual possibilities for the property. None of them were noted as impossible. But many of them, because of availability of water and sewer, we recognized we may have to put in the well and do things there. Um, pretty quickly, first, really just a couple of uses that made a lot of sense, uh, for this, uh, particular property. And those were storage units and possibly landscape supply sale because both of those would require very minimal water, uh, very minimal, uh, bathroom facility, uh, that sort of thing. We would have just one office there that would be able to maintain those two and just have, uh, restroom there. Um, but I want it to be understood entirely that the primary objective here is storage units. Um, it was spoken earlier about what most of the objectives were with the thirteen votes that spoke first out. And that was mostly about a gas station. Um, it was a big misunderstanding about there being a gas station or a convenience store. And that's not part of the plan. That's not part of the plan at all. Um, in fact, one thing that I would like to do, if it's allowable, is I'd like to give you this, uh, revised map, poke it out. You don't mind? Anybody with a different view, you don't mind? And on the back of this, I've signed a section there that I am not building a gas station. And the official request is not approving zoning codes for that project, for that project. The additional zoning codes are two point two two, nine point one, nine point two, nine point two one, nine point two two, seventeen point one, seventeen point two. And as we talked through these in pre-development and other reasons for the planning board, these were the official codes that we felt like made the most sense for us to do. The primary objective here is self-storage facility. There's only these. Um, then the secondary use would be landscape supply. And I also wanted to be, to, to make, to make a pushback on a landscape supply sale, then on the other, you're going to, to not pursue that at all and just do the, uh, self storage. Because that's really the greatest need and our primary objective. So I have, uh, I have met on the site with Duke Energy and with a, uh, general contractor. We've gone over all of these plans and, uh, so far, there's been nothing that would, uh, keep us from being able to do these particular things based on what, what they've got except. Now admittedly, the, um, office fourteen hearing was rough. Um, there was, again, big misunderstanding. A dozen people talked about leaving the gas station. They want crime. They didn't want the, you know, the traffic, all that sort of thing. I think there's a couple of things that, that led to that. It was a mistake on my part in the application. But it was figured out and, and then further understood and a couple of other things that, um, I don't think there's a lot of reason to get into because what officially on the application, uh, just have to the particular codes. So again, I want it to be understood. That's, that's what we're talking about. Um, so I'd like to address those main issues that came up on the four, on the fourteenth. And as I do so, I mean, again, and I appreciate this wrong prayer at the beginning, that we want to be a point forward, right? And so, um, these are the four. I want to preserve the bond of peace here. And that my intention is not to be contentious. My intention is not to be argumentative. Um, but my intention is to let the community know that I'm listening and that I, I heard what was said in the first one and that we want to work together to alleviate any perceived negative impact. And so the first thing is, again, no intention of building a gas station, no, no reason to spend any time on that, right? Number two, uh, it was stated by several citizens in the last year that their homes are going to increase in tactic. Increase. And it's been stated already that that would have to come along with a statement that would be more professional on that topic. And I've not been able to find anything to support that statement. Um, thirdly, you look on Realtor dot com, there's a compiled list there that indicates things that would in fact reduce your, uh, property values. And Zell Stories does not make that top ten list at all. Um, as for taxes, no verified evidence, a university study, all sorts of things you can look up that, uh, that would excuse any of this. Um, number five, uh, one resident didn't like the access being called from Kinshaw Street. So we met with the general contractor. We met with Duke Power. And we went over an opportunity to move that accent where we end up, where we have those, uh, transmission. wherever we end up, both where we have those uh transmission, um not transmission, but the uh the transporters that are on the property. And we found a better place to be able to come in, so we can keep all the traffic up there and near the, um, up there above all those homes are, so we have a minimal impact uh on that particular area. Um, number six, one comment was made that my map was not accurate, that um things are not located where they're supposed to be. Uh, I mean, th- this came off in G I S and there's G P S, uh they're all there. I I don't know what could be wrong. I'm happy to look at it with the second person that that said that, but I believe that comment was unbound. Um, several comments, number seven, were made about increased traffic. Uh, the national average uh for visits to a storage facility is six point eight two vehicles per day for a hundred units that are rented. That's one of the lowest traffic impact businesses that you can have, period. And there's, I know another comment that was made was about the speed out there. And I've been out there recently looking at all these things. And there are literally people that will blow your hat off um when you're walking the side of the road now. I saw somebody pass somebody on the four yellow lines that are converging together, past a trailer out there, just a really dangerous thing. And if this were granted, because there would be a business there and because of that community there, then I would try to go in petition for that speed to be reduced right through that area. So that would be a help uh to that particular neighbor. Um, number nine, some comments were made that the storage facility is not needed, but the research for consultants as well as the obvious growth that's going on uh that it will be removed. Uh, in August, there were citizens from Pine Hill Church Road, Henshaw Street, uh Deer Ridge Road, Ashton Ford, Sycamore Lake Road. And I can totally understand the concerns, and I want to work with everybody to find viable solutions. But residents of Sycamore Lake Road will be impacted not at all by this particular reason. There's zero impact to Sycamore Lake Road. It's not viewable from there, it's not accessible from there. There's zero impact. Most of the residents of Deer Ridge Road would not see any, any major change. And there's, there's fifty, we have to stay back off of that tree, and fifty be on their side in most of those homes. If you walk down through the wood, because I've done recently, uh think about how laid this plan is out, you can barely see some of the songs through there. Uh, there's a couple that, I mean, admittedly, you might be able to see, and we would be happy to work with them on one, one of one of the instances, to try to find solutions uh that work for both of us. Um, again, there would be to get the buffer around, new privacy testing, a lot harder than why you live in the facility. To be minimal impact uh to the community. And again, if anybody feels like they're personally in fact, they're in a made a way, we'd be happy to meet and talk through what we might can do to make the layout such. And I'll try to lay out on the map, there's one side of buildings in certain places, so that there's no traffic on the backside of the buildings in the people's backyards. Now, I realize that um the current land development plan would have to change because it doesn't fit today's plan. But the reality is that when all of this was on the A R, you know, way back, I mean, before four twenty one was there, before it certainly uh pulling a highway, um it's a very similar situation to the previous one that occurred with one on sixty four and Third Street. That historically was a very similar situation. And that one has gone through without any question. And and they have carte blanche on what whatever they want to do. And I'm, and I'm just asking very specific codes. Um, and and I don't want to sign up this highway conversion because I don't want there to be something that would disrupt the neighbors. I don't want it to be a gas station. I don't want it to be, you know, adult entertainment. I don't want anything out there that would be an issue for the neighbors because because you're thirty-five plus years with our, our family business. And we feel like a part of that community. And we don't want those types of things out there. Um, so there's any particular questions? Be happy to answer any of those, but and I recognize, I recognize the five of those. I realized it was slammed up before it seemed like, but I also recognize that we weren't dealing with all the facts. And so now that we have the facts before you, this is not about a gas station. Probably eleven of the thirteen people talked about a gas station. And I think this looks really different if it's not a gas station.
Um, how do you mean this? And this is probably which is, is the plan of the nine and country much in which I think?
So the plan is to borrow the hundred and then see how that goes with windows. And then as we begin to pay those off and we build another hundred, um depending on how that's laid out, you could probably get two or three hundred in there. Um, but we plan to do a mixed bag. There are one-sided regular storage units, two-sided, as well as some uh condition units.
Another question. So what would the hours be? The five wanted to win.
So most places that you can, um, and I think that is still sort of uh open the air with us. I think what I put in the application was uh something like nine o'clock until we let shut them off. Uh, I like heat traffic out there late at night. Uh, most storage facilities, honestly, are twenty-four hours. I mean, and they have security everywhere, cameras everywhere, all those sorts of things. But uh because it is in form of community setting, um, I would certainly consider lending eight hours. So it would be from the traffic in there that you would. Yes.
Uh, so this, this new plan is not really as busy as the old one.
Right.
If you had an opportunity to communicate this new plan with all of the affected uh property owners, and if, if you have, what was their response?
Um, I gave a similar map last time. The major difference this time is that I moved the entrance. Um, and then uh on the north side of that big power line, I just noted that that area may serve as a main fixed supply cells. Uh, before, I had, it wasn't necessarily supposed to be built, as you can see up here. It was just kind of designated, those are areas we like to use. But, I mean, at this point, the, the main objective was only was on the south side of that power line. Um, and that was just trying to indicate, because we may have, you know, rock and concrete and, you know, whatever over there within certain bins.
So, so it sounds like the answer to the question, no, you have not, can you turn up to the.
Uh, no.
The map that he presented the last time, what he's calling the new map, it will have eight dot five, one of the one of the YouTube's?
One of the uses.
Eight dot. Eight dot five, yes.
Right, which is obviously not part of the plan at the time that they said. There, there was a, it slipped by our notice because way back in pre-development days in February, we had talked about so many different versions of this. And one of the consultants we met, we had to talk about, you know, you may wanna while you're doing all this research on, you may want to ask for certain things. And and then, you know, maybe you could use it in the future for that. But then when I actually wrote the application, which you can read uh to Miss Baptiste, uh I said in there that that eight point five was not part of the current plan, and she did not listen as needed. And it's not on this map. And in fact, of that piece of paper, I'll sign a note. What I think out there that I'm not, I'm not equipped with that.
What would be your plan for uh paving, um, or asphalting or or what, what would be your plan for the surface of the public facility?
Uh, sort of to be determined, but you could do it one of two ways. You could either be uh gravel, which if done right, um, I just, the facility in my house is done that way, and it's done really well, it's packed really well, and it works great. Um, that, that could be one option. Uh, I would prefer to pave it in there. Um, just because I think it would look the best, um, but those, some of those things are still to be determined.
I've noticed, and it's a question I had, it may be a great speaking. A lot of these books, storage facilities now have uh R Vs, boats, vehicles of some description that are being stored on there. And I don't see any uh anything on here to accommodate for that, so what would be the status of that?
So in the, in the short term here, I mean, my, the main objective, again, is just, is these buildings. Um, and now when you read the codes that were chosen, there's a couple of codes in there that that are allowable for people to be storing places that are not, you know, parking or, um, you know, for visitors to that particular site, something like that. It basically means that we park over R Vs, what, what that was written for. Uh, because one thought we had was on that north side of that big transmission line, we might build a that. I, that's not something that we want to promote as, you know, we want to have five hundred votes out here. I mean, that's, that's not planned. I mean, square footage wise, you're way better off to be written five by ten storage units than you are parking somebody's boat. But I left that code in there in case we wanted to offer the opportunity for somebody to park it whatever on the, you know, in an area on the other side of that line at some point, but but again, that's, that's not one of the primary objectives. Uh, but it was, it was included because that could be a possibility. If, I mean, again, it's one of those things where primary objective is storage units. Um, that was, that was a, if we can do that, fine. But we wouldn't have the intention of promoting this as one big storage unit for uh boats and R Vs, if not to. That's not storage. So if there was a major objection to that in some way, I, you know, I, I don't care if we take that off. What we want to do to set up and do is we can store inside of it, inside. And these would be, as said, the pleasing buildings, um, they will be chosen material-wise to match the surroundings. There's trees all the way down Pine Hill Church Road right there. We're gonna leave most of that. Um, the neighbors are probably screaming, still gonna see the same trees that they, that were there and started. Um, that, that won't really change.
Any other questions?
Mostly that down here, right? Down here, downhill.
Uh, no, um, in fact, the southern, most fortunately, this is all fairly flat. You do kind of head down towards the tree in the backside, and that's why I have some water hazard here. But in the majority, it's up here where the red buildings are, and even here in the green, it's fairly flat. Um, and it, it leads to a point where it could be greater than four or five.
Right?
May, may, yeah, the question. So am I?
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks, you're appreciated. So, um, okay, so you had thirty people speaking, maybe instead. Yes, does that represent that you have the rest that's out there, or third the rest that's out there, and five percent of the rest? On the front of your uh staff report, you'll fill out how many letters will be mailed out? I don't know, right, I'll just have to. So just by understanding it, we're, we have a little bit of.
Other question. So, um, the, so the request is for our commercial condition. And recognizing the applicant has selected a specific set of, of uses. Um, if, if, if that was approved and the property was conveyed to another party, would the new owner have the ability to build other uses?
No, they will still be limited to whatever you guys decide to. They can, they would have to do another application if they wanted to change anything outside of what you guys.
Other questions?
Well, um, what is, for this particular zoning, uh H C C and these, these uses, what is uh the requirement for the um fencing or trees around the facility to protect it from sun?
Um, I believe then yours, your report, it shows, it says that um for um residential, along the residential edges, um, it's, it would have to be our, it is buffer, which would be a tightly.
Okay, D?
Yes.
What about on the uh?
Wherever there is residential and that, that. That includes agricultural residential.
For down to the ground.
They will be, they will be adjacent to A R and R twenty, so it would have to be the same.
Those all D?
Yes, sir. The only place they don't really have to do the buffer is to the north alone.
Four twenty one.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's a lot of trees there.
Yes, sir.
Any other, that the buffer required between the buildings and the water hazard setup?
Well, when you do your site plan, you would have to provide a site plan showing that um there's enough access around all the buildings to provide um fire service to every, every aspect of the building. And that would have to be determined in conjunction with the fire department.
Other questions? Okay, now we're gonna move on and um say your name and admin, please, sir.
My biggest vote, I'm with the word twenty-five, deer ridge, but uh my property is adjacent to uh the parcel with the yellow buildings. Uh, where originally, there's landscaping and hopefully a gas station. Um, I've been here for twenty-two years. That's a bit of my comments in writing. You should have the, I think, the last page of your handout. The same elements that I made in the, in the plan way back on, we got fourteen. Uh, there's just four uh group comments. One, the application actually states that this rezoning is consistent with the uh land development plan. And obviously, it's not the system of that plan. The plan calls for this area to remain low density residence. Uh, it's a piece that, her information, just she says you worked that out. In fact, all around both of the parcels in question, nothing but single-family homes. All those homes have been here for at least twenty years. In fact, Mr. Burn pointed out, his family sold that property to be developed for single-family homes. Point two is, he mentioned that these transmission lines basically prevent him from, or preventing one from putting um residents on either side of it. Well, that same transmission line runs right through my neighbor's uh Cedar Springs, across the Deer Ridge Road, across the Sycamore Lake. We've got homes on both sides of that transmission line. We named down our lawns right up to the line. I, I don't know why that prevents anybody from the dog home. We, we did. Back of the transmission line run all the way down, um, across fellowship church. Same thing there, that home on both sides, that transmission line. I don't, I don't see that. Um, number three, um, in the, the planning board, we talked about potential uses, usages including uh stock and gas bill. Now, they've taken that off the table, but for the parcel with the yellow building, basically, I don't know what. Just one last thing. No matter what type um commercial uses go in there, introducing any kind of a commercial of property into that neighborhood, it's gonna have a negative effect on the cost of that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question there?
Absolutely, yeah.
So now I'll be the first, in my opinion, I'm never gonna help you down, because I'll tell you where I'm s- sitting right now. Uh, so and I do think your case is distinguishable. I know you compared it to your prior case, but I do think it's distinguishable because as Commissioner. But I do think it's distinguishable because as Commissioner Haggis has pointed out, we've already done a rezoning for the property across the street. And the rezoning tonight makes those two compatible. Plus, the other property doesn't have any access issues, no water sewage issues, no discussion of the traffic impact on that. From the prior one we did tonight. So do you think it's distinguishable? Um, for this, for this case though, would you be willing to do away with seventeen point one and seventeen point two? That's the open air market and horticulture sale without horseplay. Those are the two yellow buildings you would now put on the opposite side of the Dinkdale easement.
Yes.
Yeah, in fact, I tried to, um, state that on the back of that case a bit, but those are secondary uses. I was originally going, those would sell for that landscape plot sale and, and I would certainly be willing to take the fall. But then, again, the primary objective is the storage unit.
And you did mention, oh, well, uh, so for my two cents, when your water sewage was obviously, that's not gonna be doable, but even if you did well in septic, I think you'd have an issue with your septic field. Uh, because of the configuration lot and because of the, uh, water setback hazard, it's not up to me, it's, you know, subject to chance, but I think you'd have an issue with that.
Well, you know, if, if this is the political area, um, and the preference of, of Mr. Poe, to say even though they have houses built there, which by the way, uh, my understanding from the planning board is I could stuff eight houses in there if I wanted to. Um, so I mean, that, I guess that could be a thought, if we, we develop that with eight, eight homes in that area, um, and sell them all. But that would be more desirable than storage units, but that's my understanding is we wanted to stuff eight of them in there.
Well, I mean, that would be a completely different application, right?
I'm just saying because of the septic, but.
Yeah, so. You, you do have an uphill battle. As we, as I sit here tonight, I'm just one voice of seven, but I see a lot of issues with the application. Uh, but one thing that does intrigue me is that you have come up with another plan that you told us tonight that you haven't had an opportunity, the plan on the table tonight. You've stated and testified that you haven't had an opportunity to communicate with the, with the, in opposition. So although I, I personally am not in a position to approve it tonight, I would be opposed to continually giving opportunity to talk to many people uh, to see if it can afford to be reached. I do think you have a lot of issues with your application.
Okay, thank you for that input.
I'd also like to say that, you know, I think you have good intentions, but profit numbers, good intentions change. They are selling it to someone else and they come back, well, it's already been rezoned. We have things like that in common. And, uh, I hate to say something like that, but plus you have the Congress fifty-seven, all of your residents, there's a hint that that says something.
Right, yeah. Well, two, I may, um, two things on that. Some of those were helping why, I believe, uh, they don't necessarily represent. They represent, you look at households, you may, may be a little bit different. Um, and there were some people, I believe, that spoke that night, weren't signed up, and it just kind of became, you know, a thing.
And, and probably a lot on this, I think, because you might just want, Louis may just want, and let's go ahead and hear from, we only got one more favor. Let's hear it, and then, and then we can go into conversation with, you know, after we get that done, that'd be good.
I thought we might, we got one more favor, so. Yeah. Uh, surprise, may I finish any of your questions, or are you gonna come back later?
Well, that'd be kind of, you know, you.
Yeah, about the, if we were to have a rezoning sale, that was the intention of doing it conditionally, so that we would really limit the scope of what could be done. But I didn't want it to be that, you know, if, if we were successful in this, and then it was sold, then somebody's not gonna be able to come in there and just put anything that went on.
But the, they should have filed.
Well, anybody could apply, so.
You know, in five years, I think somebody'd say, hell, you thought this was a good idea, so now you think this is a good idea, you know, but you still gotta, there's more to it.
Sure.
So things change.
Yeah.
You're over that.
I'm sure they, that's pretty good. Also know that it's one of only six areas between Highway sixty-four and I eighty-five that has a legitimate place you could vote convenience store. And if we don't do this and we sell a property, somebody that's a lot smarter than me can figure it out, and they'll put themselves in convenience store there. And I don't really wanna see that happen. So that's the other thing that we're trying to happen.
Uh, need to say here, Mike, who's person? Will you come up and hear your name and we add your address, please, sir?
He's in prayer room. Um.
You might not be.
It's our line of vision, fully within college streets, all of them.
Thanks.
Uh, our property is adjacent, Crawford, the money growth. Where he's got the new entryway that's gonna be under our control. I love y'all, we're having y'all live on money growth church, so we, you know how the traffic needed, we're out of here, or so it's gonna add to our traffic problem. Uh, we have to figure, I think, the answer to that. They have people that pass you on the wrong type, you know, totally on them. This is only gonna increase the traffic for our well and hay. But as far as this eventual stuff, and you won't need any property, it's gonna be adjacent to this, you know.
It could be adjacent to it.
Where anywhere around? That's all there.
Oh, the best, signed up, Mr. Dean, uh, Mayor.
But he didn't sign up, you know, I think.
Well, at least you were to sign up, you would have made it all a lot easier.
I know.
Half week in D.
Real quick.
There's one more thing. Do you want? Yeah, go ahead.
One forty-five Charles Street, Colorado. Before all y'all, several times before, different things, this is something I want to strongly, strongly support and turn it down. Because it is a residential area. Everybody who's here three weeks ago, planning board, and I think the people behind me now. That is funny, that's nice of that. Don't need potential, as you may, to not know what, what could happen later. Want to rezone, they all know, it'll be sold the next day. And then who knows what's gonna happen? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Quick, quick, I can make.
Are there any, I see any more questions or comments for the? Even a statement to the head so far, I mean, half a hundred. Yes, sir. Again, it's a board. I, I would, I would really, you know, we'd be here, I hope, just for a minute, uh, until you have a session about whether you want to decide this or not. That's how it is. Um, and I sit here listening to all this, and, um, based on, you know, you had, you had your, um, planning board go through what information they had at the time. And they unanimously denied, and come forward, and it seems like there's a lot of new information that's been presented tonight, that, uh, you know, it's turned out to be a bad spot. I just wonder, um, if we should literally not approve it, but maybe go back to the planning board and let them revisit the information, go back through the process, I'm sort of thinking out loud.
But I don't think we can do that to plan board, but we could, uh, I think we've written wrong that, I don't, I think that's passed, but I think we can, um, continue the case. Uh, like I said earlier, I'm not, I'm not gonna stand in the way of a neighbor trying to reach a court with his other neighbors, if that can be reached. I, I do think you got uphill battle on reaching that court. I'm not trying to stand in your way on that.
I think it's prohibitive that, for about the planning board back, you all done that before.
We can't go to the planning board?
Nothing that forgives, and our own, it's, uh, one, you know, they have, yeah. You, you, we, you can do that, and you could, or you can do, uh, but it's a month, month of next maybe this month or whatever.
Still be a procedure if it went back. You did plan a more versus if we just, um, continue to get, get a, a thing to speak with the name of someone.
I think you would continue it to a date beyond, I mean, after the next planning will be. And request that they look at it, give a lot of the changes to the plan, to the second to the plan.
Yeah, case of either one of them.
At this point, I'm not comfortable, you know, saying if we're going against the planning board, as, you know, they denied it. I'm not comfortable going against that, or would be, uh, would be, uh, open for them to look at it.
So far, we need to make a hell of a comment, we have a close.
Mr. Hearn let the planning board know before they voted, that he was gonna take out the gas cells. And they, they knew the changes.
Yeah, that's where I don't think all of this is about that, it's about. Yes, sir. I mean, this branch, we.
We have to have a consensus to be, to.
We just been motion. It's been motion.
We have to have the majority.
So, Roy, you, I think, I think there'd have to be a majority on any of these, whether it's, we will now continue it or, uh, kick you back to the, um, planning board.
Personally, and I, I think I see where you're going, but personally, I'd like to see if we're gonna do something like that. Is go back to the board and let them reconsider, because there's several pieces of information put on the desk. I don't know whether they've been presented or not, uh, but it's a change that was in our packet, and then what the, uh, planning board will look at. So I, if, if, I don't know what it sounded like, and the board would be making the decision tonight, I think I know what that decision is probably gonna be, pretty much, yeah.
Mr. Manager, then, then William, if a, if a motion were made tonight, I'm not trying to forecast it, but if a motion were made and if it were denied, he, he would then have to pay a new fee on a new zoning app to present a new plan, correct?
If he wanted to.
Whether it be the houses that he discussed, or?
Yes.
Or any of those issues.
Yes.
It would have to be, and we would, if he decided to do, um, commercials on the district, he would, he would have to wait one year before he could submit another commercial zoning application. Um, he could submit another residential application, which can't go, you can't, within a year, you cannot, um, commit an application that similar like to what you were denied.
There's another thing that strikes me, and I, I'm not trying to be offensive to you, sir, but you, you don't always seem like you know what you wanna do. You're throwing out all these different ideas, you haven't settled them. Um, which makes it difficult for us, because you've thrown out all these possibilities, you haven't really settled on one.
I may, I, I mean, I think you said your primary objective is the storage.
You, you did, but, you know, then, but then we come back with questions about seventeen point one, seventeen point two. And when you're up there, you're talking about maybe, maybe we can put some houses and do residential. That's a completely different application, so.
I wasn't interested in a house, I, I was just talking about, is that the issue?
So I, I give you some security, you're not quite, you're not being set solid on that.
I think it's pretty solid on the storage units. I mean, we, we, I mean, we're, the, the guy we're working with on this, again, fifty-six, three, four, and seventy-three, he said, this is your fault. And I mean, I was pretty committed to that, he had his, but, and, and, as we wanted to, they can do some of that after space, like you are. But again, maybe we can certainly take out seventeen point one, seven two, the, the only goal is the storage units there, that loading back on traffic that always.
I can't predict what the, the planning board would do, you know, based on that, but they, they voted, you know, they, they'd known the gas station was not there, the storage units were, and they went back and it was a five-zero vote, I put the wall probably gonna be some, somewhat similar.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'd be leaning, would give him time to talk to his neighbors, but if I had to vote tonight, I, I couldn't, right?
I'll say so.
Come here on.
I'm on the planning board, and, uh, the service station in traffic.
Yeah, you might, you want to hear a, a name, a name and address.
Ryan Aaron, eleven oh eight, Highway sixty-four, we saw her today. That night, it was mostly the service station. Everybody stood up, was talking about the traffic. Unwanted people hanging around, and I could see that, and I could appreciate that. I live on the floor, I know about speeders, I know about all that. But if this is solely storage units, I just don't see it. It's like on sixty-four, everybody got a storage unit. There's no traffic in there, except on the weekends, if they got, uh, their RVs and boats there. So if I had to do it with again, just my personal view of it, if it said nothing but storage unit, I'd say yes, that's just me. There's no reason for this one person. That's a key question, very good.
So if you took, so if you took out seventeen one and seventeen two, that would make a difference to you?
It would, would they, yes, it would.
Yes, I, I think that I want to probably go back and, and have that conversation with, uh, with the community, um, with regards to the, the updated plan that's presented tonight, but then also with, um, removing the seventeen point one, seventeen point two. And just seeing how that goes, um, in general with everyone. Um, I still have a concern of how close it is to the houses. Um, that, that, that's gonna always be a concern that I have.
And my concern with it all, as well as it allows to sixty feet tall, so you're not gonna get a buffer that's gonna be, that's gonna basically sixty feet, so I have a bit of issue. Board is, but, uh.
On conditional use, can we limit that height?
Yes, you did, I know, so, in a conditional zone such as this, rather than a straight resort, it would be anything on this. Well, the primary features of it is to have a condition on it, that, that one has to be breached. We're sort of negotiating special conditions during the summer. And with that said, we just added another layer of things tonight, which, you know, I'm.
But if, if he went back to planning board, in addition, speaking with his neighbor, modifying, taking out some of his YouTube, would he not also have an opportunity to sit down and staff and maybe came around some of these other issues that, uh, we're talking about, the heights and setbacks?
Yes.
And the greatest of all the time?
Yeah. Or you may, they should also be approving the, any position. also be approving the, any position.
Like I said, I don't know, the court can't be reached, but I'm not, you know, standing in line, attempting it.
So in the interest of moving on, those things like, we'll do that. What, what do we need to do to, uh, make forward?
If the obvious thing with, uh, for another round of the planning, the part of the, I mean, the planning board, uh, we have a meeting next week.
We would need to resend, we would need to at least resend the letters, if not advertise them. I don't believe that it needs to be advertised, but we did, we need to resend the letters to the adjacent property owners.
You don't think we need to put another notice in the paper?
I do not, so. No, you just remand the thing.
My, my thinking is that you would continue the night's hearing to.
Just to then get back to the planning board for additional information, and we need to submit to the.
And you'll make it only a letter?
Yes.
I think you would have to renotice everything, if, if this was the remand.
So, when you say renotice, do you mean just the letters, or are you thinking we have to do the paper too? On remand?
They, yes, um, if you continue this to October's meeting, say the second meeting, after.
No, I think we continue to remand to the planning board. What were our notice requirements?
You have to renotice.
The whole time the ordinance requires that if it was the fresh, you know, the.
So we have to, couldn't do it. And you couldn't do it in September, you'd have to do it the October meeting.
Yeah, it would be October, September, yeah.
But otherwise, you couldn't just, uh, begin with the October, well, or whenever you wanted, it doesn't matter, but after, after, to reject that is after the next, you know, October planning or later.
Was October planning?
Nice.
The nine.
Right.
So then we would have it on, we could have it on the sixteen, October.
Is it, yeah, when it went back to.
Okay, let's go on, but we could just ask it to go back to the planning board, and obviously, in real advantage of doing it, that way, you can, you can vote, you can vote. Set the next year, not have to re-notify, uh, or renotice another public period.
So a common motion? Combination motion?
Yes.
So you're ready to nominate, recessed the current public period?
Until whatever date.
Persistent remand?
And, and also request the planning board to review it again, the new plan.
I'd also like, I mean, we get some recommendations on, um, conditions that you want to report, based on the information we get.
That would be a sign to do that, uh, and obtain agreement.
I don't think that's something you have to store, you know, that's one final, I agree. It's so close, it's a big area to leave, you know, one thing, if it's still there, and they've got a house there, you don't even have to stay there. But it's a different story, and you have lived there twenty plus, so many years, and all of a sudden, the land would change. Yeah, it's safe.
And duly noted, half of residents got left, the other half of them.
Correct, that's why a lot of us weren't there last week, we didn't know about it.
So your fifty seven percent would probably more like sixty five, so.
It's a residential neighborhood, and we do all of this. I just feel like first gets the wrong decision, could have anything much like in residential, that's fine.
Little moderation.
When, uh, I'll say before, I mean, if it, if it comes up for motion tonight, I can't approve it, I have to deny, but I'm not gonna oppose, if someone makes a motion to continue, you know, I'm not gonna oppose that. Uh, but if it came tonight for an ultimate decision, I would have to deny.
Great.
Feeling.
Well, we thought sort of, sort of do, close, but again, or revisit.
But if we close it, we can, we can.
That's right, yeah.
But being, not being opposed to motion, not saying to mention.
Well, we can't, we, we have, we have, we need to come to a consensus with the board.
Yeah, gonna do that, so.
Well, you know how a lot of people, the plan is.
I don't think, no one's making a motion to continue, then remand, and I think you have to close the public session, put the next motion through.
That is, yeah, yeah. All right, that being said, we can both, yeah, that's over here now.
Mr. Brain, make the motion? There's a work sheet.
Page fifty four.
Page fifty four, oh, I make a motion to disapprove, not resist, but not resist. With my name written on it.
Yeah, yes.
I make a motion to disapprove, before, Monday night, and then the legislature, H C C, that's on the minute, it's not insensible, ten thousand, we land development plan, based on the stack of boards, supporting considers, consistent with the statement, definitely divided for technical. Also found, you're a minute, shrub is involved, and it's not, and it's only, it's grounded, and, and.
Mark, have a motion, and have a second, and further discuss, and. Hearing none, uh, please go to the vote, all those in favor of emergency, if they are saying, ah, ah, all those voted lifetime. Disapprove, I can disapprove, so. Any old, any old reason. New kids.
And, and we, we pulled, we pulled, we pulled, uh, we had a great turnout for our Friday night, I heard Friday night put it to great heart. Uh, only men worked for our hearts and grace half, and, and putting on their fur, they were playing their, the Mario Brothers movies, we probably had sixty to seventy, uh, individuals there watching, with their families. Um, we, seeing that it's now accolade today, we reached the end of our flip season, our first operating year ourselves, getting out of our Carolina pool, and it's a little angel. Uh, I wanna thank everyone who came out to the commissioner's agency, uh, community mayor's club, and the district corps, uh, good turnout from our business community as well. I wanna thank Mount Air, uh, riding the tour, Libbey and the attendants who were here tonight, and thank them, uh, personally, uh, allowing us to have a tour of the Mount Air facility, and see the, the processing, uh, uh, poultry, and everything. Uh, we have also installed new wiring for the cameras, and improved, uh, internet throughout the town hall facility, so we have uh, video for future commitments, hopefully, we'll be buffering, the slow videos, the improvement on in the future, and we will notice little bulge outs for cameras throughout town hall, for our cameras, they're not, uh, operated yet, but they have been installed, uh, throughout the town hall facility, and require for the license plate agency. Uh, we also had, uh, ribbon cutting, or, thank the mayor, and Sowers and Chambers, we're putting on a successful ribbon cutting, and the opening of Jersey Mike's last week. And we also have, successfully have a, a finance director that will be starting in early October. Thank you, Mary.
Yes, collision.
Yes, sir.
I don't even know people's names. I don't, I would, all. So the last thing I have, we reached out to, uh, passing boys in our interim finance director, and Pam Wertham, uh, ladies, thank you, Sharon, me, uh, from, this, this afternoon. The, the bank racks are complete through June, uh, twenty second, twenty twenty two, so we're nearly, uh, a week away from complete rack facilitations for the twenty two million. Uh, had not been able to finalize things in Paris, we call, uh, a dollar, we grab a seat of dinner, and to the system, start with all the rack facilitations. And H R finance are working collaboratively on, uh, working on rules for retention, for a way pay funding. Uh, they've been trying to get the tax schedules from Pata County, uh, which they've not been able to get, uh, but, uh, Pam has not been able to finish those schedules.
Did it give you any, any, any comments tonight, Dave, Edge?
They, you know.
All right. And turn. Good invite.
I have something. I'd like to move into something that, that, um, kind of bothered, um, several years ago, uh, Mr. Brown's was mayor, my wife was the board, reconsidered, uh, living in that Holland Lane Park, um, it's a great place, of course, we know people who walk, they enjoy to play, uh, to have picnic, but it's grown up, and it doesn't, and I think first, that it, it takes away from the park, we have beautiful crepe murals there, leave those afold, go in between them, and get rid of all these. It's a snake, hey. I just want you to reconsider, if I can't just say yes, no, or have to deny, but if, if you have five minutes over there, and look, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
It is pretty well going up.
It's very.
Some of the things we've done in the past, is we've entered it, um, we have, please correct me if I'm wrong, because this was a long time ago. I think it was about three, right, directed ago. And there was some issue with the repayment of a grant.
It's two thousand.
If he has a particular trend.
I think he was thinking that, but.
But, um, I, I think if we're gonna look at commissioner's brains, uh, idea, bring this back, I mean, I think that's one thing we gotta look at is where we are now, versus where we were then, back then, we weren't in a position to repay that grant, maybe we'll, and then and maybe, but maybe we've got some benefit of it, and we can just go and.
Yeah, well.
Cars are beautiful, but you can't really, and it's not the town manager's decision, the red, 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 uh, it's the town board's decision for this to even happen or not.
Yeah, I think we can relook at it, but I think we gotta.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I've looked, and I think one of the things is, I remember asking the question back, um, when Mayor Grimes and, uh, Mayor Pro Tenche were, were discussing it, and one of the things, we had had the, uh, the interstate folks in, they were talking about how the, as the, as the crepe murals grew, and others would shade the event, and you would not have the, the ground cover. But that's not been the case.
That's what happens.
That's not been happening.
I, I did walk it, uh, last weekend, and it was, you feel like, I mean.
I mean, it, it was terrible.
So now that, I, I know the crepe murals did what we've hoped. Well, they did, but we, we thought it was, it was, shade and the weeds, and I, I remember that testimony, and it's just not happened.
Well, one thing that, that did happen, is they did go ahead and clean it up a little bit, when I made the report about the kids running through the, through the through the weeds and into the, um, over the pond and.
Retention.
Anyway, you know, it, they did clean it up a little bit, but, you know, with the, with the grant, and with the water janitorial, I didn't, I didn't.
It needs to make a.
Yeah, it did, uh.
And I remember being, I remember I had an issue with the fact that that safety fence was only on three sides. Uh, I didn't like that, but there was an issue there, you know, when we went up against that grant, and we were told we couldn't put the fence on the backside.
And that's been a long time, but that, I would just.
And I think, I think we need to, we need to get some investigation, what, what would be the cost to the town, what would be, you know, what is our obligation, and, um, because I, I agree, I think, I, I go by there.
And maybe.
It's not, it's not what we were sold.
And then we get some community input about the park, because a lot of people don't use it. Uh, we would get some community input about what their thoughts are about what we should do with the park.
And the other two things is, it's not been a thing.
No, it's not, because a child could get lost in their following, and there's a few of them, coming out, I don't think it's a, that's always.
Didn't, didn't sound within, perhaps, with, with a convention, contract, or visit recently, like what could, this.
Yes, I believe that, I would call that, uh, I think it was ten years, the limit.
It was, I remember the, we gotta be close to that, no, we're not.
And another thing, too, is crepe murals occurred, but I don't think they were, they were reasonable, um, it was so stark and fair, they came in after the fact, so, I think that reason was part of.
I think Joe, if I recall correctly, Joe planned the crepe murals to help with the aesthetics, because it just, it wasn't turning out the way we got all these nice drawings that were put forward about what it would look like, it's just not really come, we had, it's not come to fruition.
Maybe that's the ten year thing I'm remembering, they said it would take about ten years, and then they think they'll achieve, I don't know, but it's, it's maybe.
I think it's something that you gotta you know, yeah, Colonel Alves has admitted, maybe we didn't make a great decision on that.
All right. So the company. Uh, Mr. Austin said something earlier, and Joe, I remember, probably, somewhat down, we, we need, we need to we've got so many projects coming before us, you know, batteries aren't building, developing, all the kind of stuff, and just kind of knowledge that we don't have uh, much, uh, way forward in the past, to be able to, uh, uh, do anything in, you know, a right way. And, uh, be able to keep stacking up, stacking up, and somehow, somewhere, you know, we probably all look, and maybe even, I don't think they like this word, but may put some kind of temporary moratorium on a vision of project, until we can get a better handle on what we really can do, uh, that's just something I think we might need to discuss and do something, because there's so many, there's so many lined up to do now, you know, and then we get in trouble, who's first, which, which project's gonna get approved and all that, and, you know. So, we just got something to think about. All right, and I got one more thing, we don't want to say anything about it, I'm gonna bring this up, uh, some of it, this will make more sense during the public session. I'd like to make the board aware of the issues that came to my attention this last week. Town manager and through the board members that have been in discussion with other municipalities about the vote, that would greatly affect South City facilities and employees. It's not surprising, but it is disturbing, the mayor and board of the surrounding municipalities are more aware of what's being studied, and I, the mayor, for our duty core. It's a disturbing trend, and it's not transparent at all, this will become clear once the board goes in bloody fashion, but I feel as a board, we need to discuss these questions, this action. So, if I got anything else? If anybody comment. Alright.
I'll maybe mostly go into closing session with some of the.
No, no.
Um pursuant subject in uh one forty three dash three eighteen eleven eight five.
Yes.
Alright. All those same as I. We need to put it there. And let's thank a uh T N A president before we do. So we can do well, please.